A work session for the planning commission for this meeting tonight. During this time, we generally discuss the agenda and Kevin gives us a slideshow of things going on and the plans that are already being developed and are about to be. And then we'll go over the agenda. You want to go ahead and do that first, Kevin?
Do mine first. Comfort Inn, that's the one by Zalpan. They've been doing a little bit of work on that and they've had permits started up, so that's going forward now. Holiday Inn Express, they're still working in there and they're hoping to be done by first quarter of next year. They're kind of hit rut, I guess, but they're hoping for the first of next year. Homes for Sweet says they're CEO and I don't know that they're open yet, but they have their CEO.
I believe they are.
They are open. The convenience store on Highway 42 and 70, they're still working on that and they hope to be open before the first of the year.
They're waiting on their hood inspection.
Their hood inspection, okay.
Kevin, are there other spices besides the convenience stores?
There will be, he's putting out, the same guy's doing all of them, but he's doing like a pita place. I think he said like a shake place?
Plant smoothie.
Plant smoothie, that's what it was.
Plant smoothie.
A pretzel place. Yeah, there'll be three kind of side businesses there.
But they're all in one building, they would be separate tenants, that's all it would be.
Right. Gray's Auto, that's what's on Highway 31, it's being built right now, that's moving along pretty good. Pediatrics Center on Limestone, they've got their CEO now, don't know if they're open yet, if they are open? Stores Facility on Highway 31, they, they're pretty close with being done. Yes, I think it did turn out, or Stores Facility, it turned out pretty well. Dollar General on Highway 22 is open, that's the one on 22 and George Floyd. I said I was gonna take this one out, but the convenience store on Highway 25 and 42, they've had their site plans pretty for months. I don't really know what they're waiting on. So, I'll probably take this one out in one summer.
Where's the first side of 42, the?
The fire station side, so the east side.
They had rezoned it, that was agriculture up until about a year ago, whatever.
Maybe a little longer than that, but yeah. I think so. Dollar General on Highway 25, they're starting to do some work out there, they're claiming graying and all that stuff. Cannon Park, they're still building Phase 4 and Phase 5, you'll probably see a final flat for Phase 6 next month. Only on, and Phase 6 is in the completion of the Cannon Park. MLRIS, they're still building Sector 4, Shallow Creek, they're still building Phase 2, Sector 4. Coslin, they're finishing out Phase 3 and as far as I know, that's the end of cost. They haven't turned in anything across the street.
They haven't, they still plan to though, don't they?
I haven't heard anything. Haven't seen plans for it or anything.
Really? I thought they turned something in a year ago.
They did years ago, but they...
It's gone, okay.
Aberdeen, they're building in Phase 1, you've got an extension for Phase 2 from the agenda tonight, preliminary flat. Timberline, they're building Phase 6 and Phase 7. Mill Point, that's their final flat, I hadn't been over there in a while, I haven't seen any permits for them, but they are, their final flat's been pretty decent, they're ready to go whenever they feel like it. Saratoga, Louis is building on the last, the town home lots there, I bet she picks that up pretty soon. And site work continues on the George Floyd. Parkway Farms.
That is a lot of their work.
Big old place.
It is a big old place. How many, how many spots, I mean how many units is it supposed to take?
Twelve?
Twelve? One fifty-six in Phase 1, one fifty-six in Phase 2. And that's all I know.
All you got?
It looks like Seth Gardens is open, I've seen people moving in.
Yeah, I took them off the last one, the last one I ran. Yeah, Brad said they have, obviously, water accounts already.
Well, we've got some new faces on our planning commission now with the new administration. We've had Chris Bond added as the council representative. We've got Donny Cook as the mayor's designated, and Ryan Tally is the administrative representative for the city of Calera. And then Danny Smith has joined on as well, so we've got four out of five that are new up here. The first thing we're gonna have to do, guys, is change the agenda. The first item on the agenda needs to be that we elect a chairman for their one-year term. And then my suggestion is to get a vice chairman as well, just when and if the chairman can't make it, we do have a designated person to run the meeting.
Excuse me, I do think you mean to amend the agenda to first add a vote on the chairperson, and then also amend to create the position of vice chair, which I don't think you currently have.
Okay.
We have, we have had a vice chair before.
Okay, well then maybe you already have one.
Because Mr. Montgomery was our vice chair.
We're starting for the vice chair.
All right, well then you may not, you just need to amend the agenda to consider who you want to be that person now.
Why don't we go ahead and cover our bases and as that we do have a position as vice chair, how about that?
And then you would consider who would serve in both those positions.
Okay. Yeah, because we've had other things in the past where we just did it like we always did it and found out we were doing it wrong. So let's don't do that. Then when they call Kevin and Fuzz, we'll know for sure that we did it the right way. Thank you, Greg.
They'll still call Fuzz.
They'll still call him.
Even if it's done right.
Another amendment to it is the, one on 70 and 42's been withdrawn. So, I'll group the, yeah. So that's scratched. The only thing I'll announce is the chairman bar, right? And then the chairman will take care of the rest of it.
Yeah, that's right.
Correcting the agendas and all that.
That's right, right, so we'll do, you need a motion to amend the general meeting starts.
First thing.
Second, all in favor, all opposed, you'll add the consideration of a chairperson, and then with the motion for whoever you guys would like to elect as your chair, that person comes from the six appointed members by the mayor. So it cannot be the council representative, Chris, Ryan, or Danny. So it's gotta come from the remainder, okay? And then once that person's elected, that person will take over, and then we'll have a motion to create the position of vice chair and then a motion to elect someone as vice chair. So those things need to be added to your agenda.
Well, that's all I know to talk about. Did you guys have anything for us?
Not really.
No speculation you want to put on public members?
I was just wondering if anybody from, our new business tonight, from Edwin Lumpkin wants to talk about their rezoning? Or to Aberdeen client extension, if anyone wants to talk during the work session, or if you want to wait till the work session?
If there's not a representative from Aberdeen, maybe they can't help, but can you guys help me understand? What's, so we're, we're meaning to do an extension, I need to understand, what are the implications of that if they don't? And if we don't, then what?
The way subdivision regulations pre- on preliminary flats is, preliminary flat is good for 12 months. But if they turn in a final flat in any part of that subdivision, if they're 12 months, sparks operation. And right now, they have, their last final flat they turned in was in July of this year. So they would have till July of next year to keep that final flat from being, or from that preliminary flat from being fired. They don't believe that they'll make that July, so they're asking up till January of the next year. Because their preliminary flat was applied for and approved in January of 20th of this year for Phase 2.
Okay. I just, and I don't know, is that normal to ask that far in advance? I mean, how do they know it's not gonna get done?
They're building slower than they expected.
Did they submit a final flat, or they didn't approve it?
No, we approved all their final flats.
Well, now, because they didn't have the second entrance, because they weren't working on, wasn't that the one?
That's, that was Phase 2, that's part of Phase 2, before they could start building in Phase 2, they had to have that second entrance down. Or that emergency entrance down.
Is that why that they're needing an extension now is gonna be?
No, they don't, they're not sure at the speed that they're building, because they've got two phases that are already final flat. So, in that, in Phase 1. So they don't think they'll get to Phase 2 by July of '26. So they're asking for an extension.
And this development originally began back in, was it '06 or '07, when their master plan, their first master plan? So it's been on our, it's been out there for like over 20 years. And it's one of the last ones, I believe, that are under old.
That's correct.
Yeah, regulations. And it's 600 and something dollars.
640, okay. And that's the entire, yeah, that's the entire.
Back then we'd approve 457 and then 248, so second. But they're asking for an extension on the second.
Phase 2. They got their first preliminary flat approval in January of '25. And they turned in a final flat of July this year.
But for Phase 1?
Yes, it's just in the subdivision.
Okay, so does it matter?
Doesn't matter what phase.
Okay, gotcha.
So the extension would give them through July?
They've already got till July of '26. It'll give them basically six more months. It'll give them till January of '27.
Kevin, can we talk about Mr. Lumpkin's request? So he's wanting to go from, sorry, I've got some fingers up here. He's wanting to go from a B2 to a M1?
Correct.
Is that basically just correcting what currently says?
Yes, it's clean though, it's just legal. Because at the time when it was built, B2 allowed storage buildings. So now, we don't allow storage buildings in B2, so he's a legally conformant, or legally non.
But there was storage building already there?
Yes, but he wants to expand and build another building, so he can't make the legally non-conforming worse. So that's why I say he needs to.
I got it.
Again, it's fair and legal and optimal.
Obviously, he's not in compliance right now.
But he's legal, he's legal and optimal.
If he, right, right.
What to build, to expand. So this is on Smokey Road?
No.
Oh, yes, 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 sorry. Caution to that one. Okay, yeah, 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 gotcha.
And he's wanting to build, put a building right there.
When it was B2, was there, am I able to build one in that area, anyone?
I'm not sure, Chris.
Well, next door is B2 as well, because we've been on that, I believe, right?
Which way?
I think to the left.
To the left, yeah, we resigned that, yeah.
I think that, before me, but yes.
Yeah, I know there was, what, one, we had one letter of complaint.
And Donny, you asked me earlier about the rear setbacks, only one skid tank B.
And what is this on B?
B2.
So is it changed? That's a real question.
It's a second level thing.
Kevin, do you know how many extra storage units it would be?
I haven't seen any plans.
It's probably just one of them all.
The way I understand it is it's gonna be a copy of that building.
The bigger one?
Yes.
I believe it's bigger than that.
Might not go, yeah, might not be a copy, carbon copy, but it's gonna do the same.
This is four acres.
That's gonna be the whole.
The whole thing is four acres?
Yeah, it's a rezoned piece that we're expecting.
Can he expand on it? I was thinking our minimum was five, I mean, I realize we're kind of fixing something right now, but it's still okay for him to make in addition to it, even though it's not conforming to our five acre minimum now?
It's three.
Oh, it's three, I thought it was five.
What is our, what is the current rule on our agenda? When do we have to ask that in by, I know the council is winged the one.
Oh, I'm sorry, are you talking to us?
Yeah, with planning and zoning, agenda, anything that's coming up, is there a deadline? Other than something like what we're doing tonight?
Yeah, usually, we might get it as soon as possible, but there are certain things like rezonings that have to have notification, you know, 15 days or something, yeah, some are 30, some are 20, depending on what you're asking for.
Well, what I'm asking is, there was a complaint, and in that complaint it said we had two full business days for citizens.
They were, they were talking about the Facebook post.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, our notices went out when they were supposed to go out.
Okay.
So the notices go to the adjoining property owners, that's what's legally required.
That's what's required, and posting it for a couple places.
On all that, we could, you know, it means a couple weeks at a time, what's gonna be on there?
Well, what I would encourage, for it to be on the agenda of something like what happened tonight for the chairman, then we set a time just like the council does for their agenda, so that we are transparent. I mean, that's one of the big things, the council and mayor have spoken about it, not making the perception we're not being transparent.
When have you been posting our agenda, Granny?
Wednesday?
So, that's.
That's in line with the council.
I think y'all said what, Monday and then they posted Wednesday?
Yes.
Well, why don't we just follow that? It's gotta happen then by Monday and then she posted on Wednesday.
Depending on what it is, if it's like a rezoning, it has to go before the.
Oh, you, we're just, let's say, one of our residents won't be on the agenda for some reason, and it's not in reference to something that has to be advertised.
Yeah.
I think it's as much a notification as anything.
So, so one of the things, and I realize this is not accounted, which is where I used to work, there they actually post signs of property in the field, so that maybe the next door neighbor has a notice, but the person two doors down doesn't get the notice.
We talked about doing that in the past?
Yeah.
I do believe that will be something that will start happening.
So do we need to, do we need to change anything for that to happen?
I believe so. We just aren't doing that, right?
I mean, it just seems more, it seems more transparent.
Well, plus?
You put a sign up on the road, everybody drives the ice.
Well, and to that point, there's a lot of times, these notices go out to the previous tax notice. So there's often times, the next door neighbor ain't the same owner of the property.
The only thing I'm gonna say is when you do that, you're gonna have to up your zoning costs, your fees, because your fees are barely covering the postage now. When the postage is nine to $10 and you're only charging $150 and you've got X amount of people you gotta send it to, when you go to adding, printing one of those signs, that's gonna get costly. So you need to consider changing your fees if you're gonna do that.
On the postage thing though, the application says cost plus postage.
Yeah.
So, we've decided here on out, we're gonna figure out what postage is, or get close to it, and then charge, they're charged the $150.
But that's the reason we didn't do it before, because those signs were so costly, it was gonna feed up every bit of the fee.
We could add the signage as well then.
Time to get pretty expensive.
I'm just trying to think how to cover it, but.
I know county puts out signs when they rezon stuff.
And some municipalities do.
Yes, but the county signs that I've seen are.
They're little, like real estate's not kind of, a little bigger.
Yeah, but not much bigger.
Yeah.
Like a campaign sign, depends on how many you buy.
I think though, wasn't this complaint based on the post on Facebook?
Yes.
And if I understand correctly, we have our requirements, Facebook is not one of them.
No.
So that's, that's the transparency issue is, actually posting on Facebook was above and beyond what was quote required.
That's correct.
However, the perception was, you only gave me a couple days. So I think this committee needs to consider either making it a requirement to post on social media in line with our current requirements, or do something different to avoid the perception, so that there is transparency.
Perception is reality.
It is, agreed.
So if we post online on the website, our agenda would mean to post it on social media?
Yeah, I mean, you're only talking, the Facebook post was one day later than what you guys would get as an agenda. So, I mean, you're kind of saying that you want to inform the public before you guys even know what's on the agenda.
Well, all I'm saying is if the principle is transparency, then it seems reasonable to me that if those that are impacted by a change, the property owner, we have set requirements, right? And we communicate with them in a certain amount of time, whatever that rule is. If we're also gonna leverage social media to avoid the perception of a short period of time, then somehow those need to align. Because it was well intentioned, but it still wasn't perceived well.
So when we mail these letters out, we put it on social media at the same time, I got you.
Yeah, there you go, you set it a whole lot easier than I did. So you're saying, and I just want to make sure I'm right, when notifications go out to the property owners and the adjoining property owners?
Make that notice.
Make that post there.
Yeah, if we're gonna leverage social media, and I think we do, because I think, and probably most people see that, but again, if we wait, it technically almost becomes official, because that's what people use. So, I think we avoid that perception, I know we only got four minutes, but.
Is that feasible, Kevin?
I believe so.
I mean, I know y'all are trying, but I appreciate, because not every municipality does that anyway. So the fact that we're putting it on Facebook is, we are trying, we're not trying to, you know, do a late thing, but I get you, the perception of it, people could think, okay, well, this is last minute, it doesn't give us time to think it's due.
Yeah, I mean, I get, you know, I get the perception.
Yeah, and we post these things in third places, nobody looks for them, we what, post others, we go to store.
It's not 1960 anymore.
So, it would be above them, I mean, it'd be above and beyond. Great thing though, to let everybody know.
Is that just something you guys?
Because it is public notice.
Sure. Is that just, is that something you guys want for things that require public notice? Like final flat is not the, final flat that require public notice.
I think just hearings, right?
Yeah, hearings.
Public hearings?
Is that something your office does, or James?
James is waving his hand up.
Yeah, James.
He has to get the information from them though.
Yeah, James is poster, I will be the one sending them.
You're the post provider.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd say that, no problem.
So would there be the disadvantage on the one you're saying that's required to submit the application 20 days or 20 days or whatever? If you could do it faster than that, is there a problem with that?
You can't legally spend hours, because the book says that it's gotta be the 21 days before the meeting.
I can't hear you, Kevin.
I mean, they can, all I'm talking about.
I was talking to the Lord, I mean, because the book says that we gotta do 21 days before the meeting, is the last day they can turn it in. They can turn it in, I mean, it's according when they turn it in. They can turn it in, I mean, it's according when they turn it in. But they have, it has, for it to get on the next month's meeting, it has to be twenty one days ahead of time. If it's, they turn it in and it's nineteen days, they have to go to the next meeting.
They don't say that if they turn it in twenty one days and we post it on social media, have we heard anybody?
No.
Twenty one days?
They're gonna forget it, but about twenty one days comes up, the public will probably be upset about it.
You can post on social media whenever the commission decides that they want to do that. Um, it's just up to you. An open meeting requires seven calendar days notice of a meeting. So that's really, and to be published in places that you're saying nobody looks. So the basic minimum is seven, and then as Kevin said, there are some situations that require more notice. Okay, so if you guys wanna post on social media or, you know, do anything extra, it's just up to the commission or what you're, what you're willing to agree and decide to do.
All right. Before we start to meet, I know we have some guests out here that I know for a fact are here for the County Road forty-two and Highway seventy situation, and it has been withdrawn. So if you don't wanna sit here for the rest of the meeting, you do not have to be here. I saw Ms. Marsalis, I knew she was here for that. Okay, cool, it's, it's not on the agenda though.
In reference to what you were talking about, notifications, are property owners should, that border, anything that's being, should be notified? Is that correct?
That's correct, they, they get certified mail.
I did not get one.
Maybe we had the address, I saw your name.
I did not get any notification. The first I knew of it was...
Forty-eight-one, Highway forty-two? Okay. I'm sorry. All right, um, we're gonna call the meeting to order, and we have the first item of business is to adjust the agenda. And I'm gonna let Grace have it.
Yeah, you need a motion to amend the agenda to add a topic to the lay-in chair person. So you need a motion, a second, and then as majority votes, you say.
All right.
A second?
Got a motion and a second to amend the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, adjusting the agenda to make the first item of business electing a chair?
Yes, and then now you'll need someone to nominate from among your appointed members that would not include the councilperson, the mayor, city mayor, administrative official.
Some of us have talked and we're nominating Greg as our chair if he's willing to serve.
A second.
Got a motion and a second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So you're meeting Greg.
Thank you. So, um, next was the vice chair?
Yeah, I, since you, mayor may not have a position, I would amend the agenda to consider the creation of a vice chair position that would serve in the absence of the chair.
So I'll make a motion that we create the position of a vice chair if we don't already currently have one.
Yeah, my second thought.
Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
And then you, then you need to, okay, so there's two steps, amending the agenda, okay? And then you need to, um, technically you need to amend the agenda first, which the college went to the second step there, but... And then the second step is actually, you're notifying people that's on the agenda, the second step is actually creating the position. And then the third step would be nominating and choosing someone as vice chair.
So I make a motion that we amend the agenda.
Second.
Or create the position of a vice chair.
Okay, now all in favor?
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
And then now you want to, now, now you've added that to the agenda to consider, and now your motion would be whether or not to create a vice chair position. So that's what you just did, but I would do it again.
I would do it.
Go ahead, Chris, make your...
All right, so I'll make a motion if we don't already have a position for vice chair, then we go ahead and create a position for vice chair.
Second. All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now you want to amend the agenda again to vote on the vice chair.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to nominate a vice chair.
My second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now you get to the meeting matter. Who wants to be vice chair?
I nominate Bree if she is willing to serve.
My second.
Thank you, I am willing.
We have nomination in a second. Go ahead, man.
Motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And now, Mr. Chair, you go through the rest of your agenda.
God bless Greg.
Show me where we're at on this.
We can, we can have all that in one motion if we want here.
All right, I guess first is approval of minutes. We got minutes from regular meeting and the special meeting, so... Which is the first one? The October thirteenth, so...
No, there would've been no minutes on that because there was a corner.
So we don't have to approve that?
We have to approve the one before.
Yeah. The one before.
One before and another special.
We did have a special.
So the twenty, oh, wait, the twenty-second?
We did, yeah, we approved the minutes from September and the special meeting. Yes.
So it's only the special meeting?
You're only doing the rest of it.
Okay. So for the, we need to approve the minutes for the special call meeting, October twenty-ninth?
I make a motion to approve it.
Got a motion and a second? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm just gonna stay since I wasn't here for that.
I'll stay as well. I would draw the extension.
That's seven to two extension.
So I guess we're new business now?
Uh, your reports of the planning commission members, I'd like to ask.
Do we have reports from any of the planning commission members?
Just based on some of the conversation in the work session, we, we need to make sure we do, don't you think we need to make sure that we put the social media out at the same time we mail out notices? And then also, are y'all gonna look into how much signs are?
Yeah.
Because we may need to go up on our feed.
Can we, can we go ahead and just say cost of signs, cost of...
I'd agree with you.
And cost of postage? Go ahead and...
Organists is just, uh, one fifty and postage.
Can you get a general sign, I don't know what the county has, but can you get a general sign that says this property is up for rezoning? Contact the city?
So they can be reused time to time?
Yeah, so you wouldn't have to make a design every single time?
Normally, I think normally the county sign says what it is and what it's going to.
R one to R two or whatever.
I think that's what it says.
Yeah, I've seen them, but I've never...
I think it says what is zoned currently zoning and then the, what it's going to.
These terms.
Y'all just, um, I would love that the fees are in your ordinance, so that would have to be changed by ordinance. Okay, so you can impose that from your pushback to the legislature.
We could make a recommendation to the council. The council officially has to do it. So I'd, I'd make a motion that, that we recommend to the council that do add additional ability to, uh, to communicate to the public and add the cost to, and revise the cost of permit or whatever it's gonna pay for.
Are you guys going up a tick to mount? Are we doing...
You might want to get, you might want to get information on the cost of the sign first and then, and, and whatever else you wanna add to postage.
Postage is...
Our recommendation could be to have somebody...
I'm not gonna do that, right?
Yeah, but city, city don't need to know them out.
Why don't we do the postages now?
Right now, we figure out how many parcels touched, plus the parcel that is in question, but how many parcels touched that parcel? And basically do a flat fee of whatever a certified letter cost at the time.
So if the council amends the ordinance and we can basically set a price and then...
Numbers, don't make it a fixed...
Because postage is changing.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, don't make it a fixed price, but, but, I got you.
Now, the postage part, it says postage for that reason because postage always changes.
And we can do the same for the signs, because if you have a corner lot, you'd have more than a single face lot.
Is that something that you would want, every side or publicly road facing sign, side?
That's what I would encourage, but it's up to the, what the commission do.
Because you could have two, one, two, three, I mean, it could all change.
It's not just to say that we could go ahead and buy some signs if we know all our something, well, I don't know. I don't have an answer.
Yeah, we, and Tammy can attest, we talked about this a while back and never could get a real good plan on how to do it. Because there were so many variables, so, you know. Um, do you have one sign that goes around to every piece of property? Or do you have, like y'all stopped talking about, the property owner buys the sign when they do the rezoning request?
You may not be able to get the sign in time. Because it's only two weeks.
Uh, you can get, you can get a sign, try it.
But if it just says like rezoning or, or, you know, under rezoning or whatever consideration, it'd just be something generic, and you wouldn't have to have so many different signs.
Yeah, like I said, at one time we had the idea of having just one sign that we have.
Yeah.
And then it would go to Eddie Lumpkin's piece of property over there.
Yeah, and I think just posted, I mean, I, I don't think you'd have to do every road. I think, I mean, you're already going a little above and beyond, so I think if you post it one time, it would be, whoever sees that sign will look, will look to see what's the zoning change.
What you got, Don? Could, could we, uh, could we add this to the requirements for the application? And let the applicant get the sign?
We threw that around too, and, I mean, you know...
I think that, that's gonna run into illegal, uh, notice time too.
The chief sign, nobody can read and, you know, it would... I think it's, I think that would've been harder to place myself, but... I think if we were gonna do a sign, we would be, the city should be...
Every time we came up with an idea, there was a problem.
It's still more than what we're doing though.
It is.
And more than it required.
More than required, so whatever you did would be better than doing nothing.
Well, a hundred two color sign, front and back is with a, a stake is about six bucks if you wanna have it.
And it could be something, I mean, like a, like a campaign sign. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be a, a frequent billboard, you know. Um, and that could be written on with a charting. I'm guessing, is that, is that what y'all...
I think it needs to be professional looking, in my opinion.
Well, kinda what I'm getting at is, do we wanna have a hundred signs?
Or fifty, I mean, just price goes up per sign depending on...
I mean, if you're doing a hundred signs or fifty signs, you don't want them to say, all say, any to them wanting.
No, but could we, like we talked about, first step, let's just go with this sign, this sign.
It's got that date.
So it does have that date.
It's got that date of the meeting, because they're not gonna look it up, maybe not.
Wow, I'll write it as a pledge, we'll do that.
I mean, that is something we consider.
Let's think about it.
Miss push this to this line and let everybody look into it and see.
That's what we get, right? What do we do in this case? What do we do in this case? What do we do in this case?
So we're gonna just continue this discussion, have it on the agenda to do some research, talk about it next month? Look at any other reports from planning commission members? Do we have a chairman's report? I promise you, I don't. All right, um, new business, so we had, um, one of the rezonings withdrawn.
Yes, forty-two and seventy.
So we got two things tonight. What we'll do, we'll have the applicant come up, speak, are we on a time limit?
Three, three minutes. I got it.
I know the applicant usually has a little more time to explain what's going on, but, um...
James can go down there.
Yeah, but, um, usually it only public hearing part.
Okay, so we'll have the applicant come up, explain what's going on at the microphone. Then, guests, if you have comments or questions, one at a time, we'll come up to the microphone, keep it brief and to the point. Um, if we get off track, we'll reel it back in. Then after all that, the applicant needs to be paying attention to these questions and comments. You'll have a chance to return after everybody has one turn speaking and you can address those items. Um, let's try and keep track of those things as well. And so we'll start off with, um, Edwin Lumpkin. The rezoning on Smokey Road? Yeah. Four-two-zero-one, Smokey Road.
Stand there.
Yeah, if you would, uh, also when y'all come up, if you would, give your name and guess your address and speak into the microphone and everybody else, let's give them respect while they're up there. Everybody direct everything to the commission and we'll go at it that way.
I'm Brian, but Eddie Lumpkin's just had out of the hospital, so can't be here at night, so I'm here for him. The property on Smokey Road, forty-two-o-one, Smokey Road, looks like, best we can tell, in two thousand three, there was an annex, two thousand three dash zero eight, and somehow in that process it was changed from the original zoning classification M one to B two. So now it's not conforming, and we just wanna have the zoning switch back to M one.
Do we know why it was, so it was originally B, M one?
Yes, the original, like all the original plans and everything that were approved was M one, and Eddie bought it from the original builder and somehow between now and two thousand three, it was changed to B two. It's hard finding any records, twenty-three years ago, but...
I don't think it was ever M one to begin with.
I wonder how they got, that, that's what we kept saying, but we don't know how they got it built.
They allowed storage buildings in B two when it was built.
Ah, so that makes sense. Well, I would...
We, we changed the zoning.
Yeah.
We just assumed it was an annex, we couldn't find it, because it was on the floor.
And what, what are the plans for the, the additional building?
So the original plans, you can see behind the rear building, the rearmost building, the pad is already laid out there, and we just wanna add another one at some point. We'd like to have the ability to do that. But we can't for the B two.
So you, you say the pad, you mean it's, uh, concrete's already been poured?
No, the concrete hasn't been poured, it was laid out, but you can see the side parts already been... parts already been done.
Kevin, is this a case of being grandfathered in, or?
No, no, that's why he's getting his rezoned, because it's technically legally non-conforming right now, and he can do business there, but it's non-conforming for the zone that it's in. But in order to expand, you can't expand on a legally non-conforming, so he would have to change, this is what we're doing tonight, he has to change to M1 to become conforming, so he can expand.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Mr. LeVet, the commission? Well, that's what, when he sits down, they can give up to the mic and, but, yeah, just to kind of sum that up, that was, is existing non-conforming, he's wanting to rezone the D-conforming, so he can do additional work to the property.
So he can expand.
Okay. Sir, if you would, give us your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Norman Brandon, I live at 138 Chrisfield Circle, so all of my property is not technically adjacent, it pretty much looks out my front door, pretty much right at the storage unit, which I just want to say real quickly, we're not against, my wife and I have actually used that storage facility on a number of occasions, so we're very glad it's there, okay? So it's been very, very convenient.
The work we've done out there this week?
We heard it, I saw it, it was kind of interesting, there's some questions my neighbors have, we just, you know, we're doing more questions. I've been informed, because I live on that side, that there's a drainage channel behind there that apparently...
Excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry.
If you would, speak to, speak to us in the microphone that late, we're streaming, that's not a way to all get out to folks watching it.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, we were concerned about the drainage situation, so my neighbors, apparently there's some kind of drainage there that, from what I've been told, isn't exactly doing, already it's not doing what it's supposed to do, so we're just kind of wondering about that. And I was wondering, since it's a 24-hour facility, that people can go in and out pretty much at will, you know, there's going to be a certain amount of, you know, noise and stuff, and yes, I definitely hear it, if there's going to be any kind of site or sound abatements, to just kind of lessen the impact on the folks in that immediate area. Again, not that we're against anything, but, you know, just kind of be a good neighbor kind of thing, and just curi, out of curiosity, since now I know it's just a building, if it's going to be just a flat one or two, or however many stories the building, that's it, just some basic concerns, I'm not trying to tell anyone what they can do with their property, just kind of want to know what's going on.
Are there currently any buffers behind, say, on the neighborhood side?
Just the line of trees, I believe, more or less, like the buffer across the property, my guess would be only about...
Sure, you got a fence, and then there's some trees behind it?
Uh, there's some trees, I know that, but, since some of them got knocked down, too, recently, so we're just kind of wondering what's going on. But that's it, I guess I can sit down now, or any questions?
The trees are on the neighborhood side, or your own side?
Again, since I don't actually live adjacent, I think some of them, just watching my names, some of those trees have probably belonged to them, with where their property line is drawn, and some of them are, belong to the storage, because it's quite the hillside, quite the drop-off there. But that's it, really, I think that pretty much covered everything.
Mr. Brandon, thank you.
My name is Pete Chidula, I do back up to the space, and there is a drainage ditch back there, and I'm more interested in the drainage of the future, and how you're going to grade this. We've already had parts to the left of me, if you're looking at it, that it water has washed down, and they put in these giant boulders, I don't know who decided to do that, or whatever they're going to do, but I think there's a hell of a lot of grading problem back there. It's just not going to be a flat pad, because there is, there are 10 feet, maybe a story and a half above my property that backs up there. So where does all that come, especially if you do an asphalt parking lot? What are we doing with all this? And then I was worried about the buildings, because when I read about this, it could be two to five stories. I don't understand. But I do back up, I'm the last one in the line, is the way I read that map, 143. And there is a drainage ditch there, but there's one hell of an erosion problem on the other side of the ditch, and anything that grows in the ditch is stuff that's washed down. So what are we going to do, because I don't want it all in my yard? Because we always have, already have a problem to the left of me, about four houses down, and so they put some big boulders in there, but I heard it flooded her backyard, I do not know this, I didn't see it, but I do see the aftermath of these rocks and everything. I don't want to create a waterfall. So I want to know, what the hell are we going to do? Are we going to take it down, and then build it up? What are we going to do? I just, I want to do a blank, if you come here and we'll rezone it, and then you can put it in, and then all gravel thing, the water's going to come to eventually. There is no buffers or stops, and it's what, it's all self-planted. Nobody's taking care of it. That's all I got to say, I don't know how many people are here on the total thing, I know in Orleans, across the street, the lady behind us is right there, but there's a lot of questions about just to rezone it, you know, what are we going to do to improve? Because you just can't build them there the way they are, you're going to have to move dirt somewhere, and drainage to put in. They didn't put any underground drainage so far, if they did that, we wouldn't have the ditch.
Kevin, can it be two stories?
A M1 actually allows up to three stories.
Yeah, I don't necessarily want something three and four stories, 10 feet in my, from my home, property line, kind of close, isn't it?
How will, how will we, how will the drainage issue be, if we were to rezone this, how would the drainage issue be resolved?
I talked to Bill about, I talked to Bill about this, he said that there is a detention pond in the back.
Of what?
Of the property. But, let me finish.
Sir, you can, you can have a seat now, we've got your comments and everything, we appreciate it, it's kind of, these guys here, we're just looking at the zoning part of it, that's kind of future, depends on a lot of things, but go ahead, Kevin, you got it?
Yeah, he said that there's a detention pond back there that is, for lack of a better term, just been let go, that it needs to be cleaned up and redone. I can't speak for engineering, but I would assume that they would make that part of the plant when they come in, is that that pond is in repair, and readdressed.
In construction, if they build a new building, they have to have several planes and everything.
Oh, yes, yes. And there would be times in the future to address it as well. And it was my understanding that the pond that is there was built to retain the water for that entire area. And just to clarify, who would be responsible for the, to retain that detention pond?
Yeah.
The property owner.
So there's a retention pond on the property already?
We made channels first, Kevin. Many stores?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to say right here, it's about right there, you could almost kind of make it out.
So the house is lower?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I, I believe if that, that pond was redone and cleaned up, it would probably solve a lot of problems.
This came before the house, before that's ever been?
Yes.
What about, like, any site or sound abatements? Like, would they be required to do any kind of...
I mean, they're required to have a buffer, but technically, they wouldn't need that buffer with what they got right now.
Is there a distance toward the buffer?
That's about a foot, though. Same pond. Without a fence or logs, 25 feet, and I measured it, just kind of sit here on my bed, and it was about 30 feet, yeah, from the fence, from the fence to the property line.
Well, before we have Mr. LeVet come back up and speak, is there, are there any other guests that'd like to come up and have any comments or questions on this? Well, if you will, Mr. LeVet, just come on back, I got your last name.
LeVet, sorry.
If you will, come back up and address some of those concerns.
So I'll just go in the order that I remember them, we do have drainage, and we have been out there the last couple of weeks, updating all of that, cleaning it up, I've got some photos on my phone, if you'd like to see that. The drainage ditch that runs behind the houses, runs through every single homeowner's piece of property, so it's not on our property, but our guys did go down there and clean it out for all the homeowners last week, and the, I'm assuming he's referring to Miss Lally that lives on the corner down there, I talk to her every day, and she doesn't have any problem with us. As far as site work goes, again, other than increasing the non-terminable surface area, there is no site work to be done, it was laid out years ago, so there's little to no site work to be done. As far as noise abatement goes, I mean, many storages are inherently quiet business anyways, I don't know anybody that goes, many stores late at night, maybe 1% of our users go at night.
I think you're referring to construction.
Well, I mean, we're not going to be doing construction at night, we'll probably stop before dark, it's normal practice. As far as the height of the building goes, it's going to be exactly like the one that's there, it's going to be a two-story building, it's ground floor on each side, slope's already there, grade's already there.
Like, you said a two-story building?
Yeah, so it's on a hill, so it would be ground floor on both sides.
So not higher than what's there now?
No, it'll be the exact same building that's there now, carved and copied of it.
This is a question, Grace, can we put all this as a stipulation, or we can't? Maybe save them, but...
Either makes the zoning requirements or not, it's up to you guys to consider, like, what you want to do with that piece of property, and you're considering all the safety, health concerns, and that's part of your consideration.
For what it's worth, we already have plans, if you all want to see a copy of the plans, I'm happy to share that with you, put up a high-rise behind the neighborhood. The original plans show the two buildings, they're identical, and we just want to build the second one. We've already, actually, got BetaCom is the company that's making the building for us, the manufacturer, we already have the stand plans, so I mean, it's shorter than, it's not as tall as a normal two-story building, it's a little bit shorter.
Maybe a question about construction time, so how long, how long would construction be if you were to be able to do that?
Well, I mean, right now, we're building six buildings out on Highway 280 behind Walmart in Brook Highlands, and we broke ground 30 days ago, and we've got wrought iron up and steel on four of them, so if it's fast, we don't mess around.
Eddie likes to get them built. Yes, for Grace, I want to understand what our options are, could we do a conditional program, is that permitted?
You're making a recommendation to the council about whether, which zoning, what's it, what that zoning is for that property, and I don't, I mean, it's either what it is now, or whatever they've requested it to be.
So we don't get any conditional?
I mean, like, like, I mean, have you done that before?
We've done that past. Like, we rezoned from D1, we rezoned from D1 to A1 up to Long Hill, and one of the conditions was that there couldn't be trouble to put on that property, so we've done it before.
Is that a new one? So I already didn't follow the order, is this a special exception?
This is a special exception, yeah, it was kind of...
Can we make a recommendation to the council based on what we're hearing, and the council will live on?
I believe so.
I mean, would that be a better way to do it, but the council will want to hear what the commission would recommend, what stipulation to be.
What are, what are, what are the conditions for top?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I...
Well, he's saying, we can do up to three stories, but what I'm hearing, we're not going to, but I'd rather have it in, you know, the old saying goes, it's not true if it's in writing.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the concerns you guys are having, like drainage and things like that, are things that would be addressed by the plants and the engineering, and, yeah, I mean...
We can't restrict how many stories.
Well, we can make a recommendation to the county, I mean, to the council, if you want.
I don't think, I think we need to say yeah or no.
Yeah, just to be, just to be, I mean, any kind of drainage situation, it would be taken care of by engineering. We would do all the calculations to see how big the pond had to be, if it needed to be expanded, which I don't think it would be.
Would y'all like to see us out of the plans for the building? Run up to the car and get them?
Because the, the pond was built, this is behind it, and the pond was built for that entire place.
Where does the pond sit?
It is...
What does it look like right now?
It's a little hard to see, because it's a little, it's overgrown, but it's right in here.
It's just a little sun-dragged.
I got one question about this drainage ditch, did I understand you said your people cleaned that whole ditch?
That immediately behind our property, the concrete drainage ditch behind the houses that's on the homeowner's property? Yes, we're cleaning that out.
The whole ditch?
It's immediately...
Excuse me, we're going to need to, Keith, we're going to have to have y'all address the commission, we can't have any cross-talk, sideways talk out there, so the question is, we're not, we're not concerned with construction, what we need to be looking at here is whether or not we're going to allow this, because once you get it rezoned, they can do whatever that zoning is. So if we don't want, if there's things we don't want them to do if they rezone it, we just can't rezone it, so that's where we're at on it.
It's already, it's already, it's non-conforming now anyway, it's kind, it's kind of doing some repair.
Correct.
Well, it wouldn't have necessarily been repaired?
Okay, wrong term.
It can...
It can remain non-conforming.
That's correct.
It's legal.
That's correct, it's legally non-conforming.
Got you.
They just can't make any additions.
Well, it's just when you start adding conditions, that makes it like a conditional use, and it would need to be under the conditional use rules in the zoning book, and this isn't, it's something that is a conditional use.
Right.
Yeah, and the...
When you start adding, because that's when you do the conditional use, and they let you add, I don't want this, we don't want you to do this, we don't want it to be able to, stories, and they have to stick to that.
Yeah, and the stipulations are kind of being suggested, or not have anything to do with zoning.
Right, right, yes.
And you're going against your own zone, when you say that it can't be higher than what it is.
And, and what can also be high, too, right? Like how, like, there's buildings in M1.
Because 45-foot minimum, or maximum.
Yeah, so still, you can have...
45-foot or 3...
In M1, so, I mean, I think, like, if you're, you know, I kind of trust that y'all are going to do what y'all got planned to do, right? Because I can't see Mr. Lumpkin selling that.
Or having something that's an eyesore, or bad for the damage, this is not how it exists. Hey, Kevin, I'm kind of asking for an opinion, but I'm, I'm not really familiar with that area over there. How drastic of a change rezoning is this, what would it look like or translate to going from one to the other, as far as what they can do, the size of the property, the size of the piece that's there left to build on?
I don't know.
I guess, are we kind of still keeping it in context, or not, by rezoning this?
There is M1, literally 100, few hundred feet down the road from, I don't know if you can see, mine half, but this is, the parcel question, everything you see pink is M1.
What is the new now, what is the...
The what?
The, the use map, what, what, yeah.
James, can you give me the control again? James, can you give me the control again? Which is red is general commercial. And that blue is, uh, light industrial. But again, the majority of the land, that blue, that light blue section is this pink section, I think is a huge piece of property. And therefore...
Does the commission have any other questions for Mr. Lovett? Any more discussion between the commission on this?
I think a motion to... To rezone it to M1? Probably to M1.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I'm abstaining on this one. Motion passes. So the next business is Aberdeen Phase Two Preliminary Plaid Extension Request. Do we have somebody representing what comes to this one? If you would, give us your name and tell us what's happening.
Yes, sir, my name is Brett Loveman, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant to request this extension. It was actually, the preliminary plaid was approved earlier this year. And due to just construction delays with the first phase, this is the second phase. We're requesting that the preliminary plaid be extended for 12 more months. So it was, it was set to last at the beginning of, at the beginning of January 2026, so we're requesting a 12-month extension of that. Just due to development delays and construction delays.
Commission having questions?
I'm sorry, would you say your last name one more time?
Yes, sir, it's Loveman, which is L-O-V-E-M-A-N.
So I may have heard it wrong, Kevin, but I, I thought it was July, so it's, is it January? Yes, with the preliminary plaid, and if you have, submit an approval, and have an approved final plaid, anywhere in that subdivision, your preliminary plaid goes for another 12 months from that date. And their last final plaid was in July, I believe, of this year, for one B.
It may have been, but I thought the preliminary plaid was approved in January 2025, so about 10 months ago.
Yes.
So I'm not sure, so I thought it had to be, that had to be extended.
No, once you, once you have a final plaid in subdivision, that 12 months starts over again.
Okay.
So you would have actually till July 26th.
I'm not 100% sure that that's when the last plaid was recorded, I don't...
I looked it up today.
It was?
Yes.
So...
It was actually... The final plaid for Phase 1B was July 14th, 25th.
So could we get a six-month extension to January?
Yeah, maybe.
So we're not asking for any different time, we're just, I guess, asking for a six-month extension instead of a 12-month extension for the preliminary plaid.
So instead of it coming up this January, it's 12 months, it's still going to come up the same time, it's still going to be during... No, they still want it to come up January 11th, 2027?
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah, so you're adding six months on because you didn't realize that the, the July date?
I, I thought it went off in our preliminary plaid was approved, not in the last final plaid was recorded.
Got you.
My, my mistake.
My only issue with this, this development is that this development, like I said before, was first put on our books back in like '06, I believe, unless I'm incorrect on that. And so you're talking about a development 20 years almost. And it's also one of our last ones to go under our old standards, and you're talking 600 homes, over 600 homes. So we have, this one has been postponed for so long, I don't like the idea of keep, keeping postponing, even if it is, I mean, six months, it actually is a year though, from what you're currently in, like original plan. I mean, I know now you've got six more months because of your final plaid last July. But this is a development, I feel like that needs to be pushed along and moved along. We're trying to really get on our new standards and get all of these old, you know, outdated neighborhoods complete. So my concern would be to continue to extend the subdivision that is under our old regulations. Do they also need funds?
I mean, I concur, I mean, it's, you got it now, if you want to take it and move on from there, go to the used style.
It's got to July anyway, right?
Yes, definitely, July 26th.
And I just want to confirm that...
I don't see a reason for us to even be entertaining it. If it's not going to come up to July, why are we talking about trying one something by 27? But I mean, so now it does, so let's wait till July.
Yes, and, and, and just so you know where we're coming from, we also wanted to come before you as soon as we knew that they were going to be, we didn't want to...
Oh, that part's good.
We didn't want to be coming in last minute.
Do appreciate that.
Oh, that's good, that's real good, I, but that sounds to me like we got, we got quite a bit of time.
Okay, okay, so I just want to make sure, I'm, we are good until July 14th, or I guess July 13th of 2026?
Yes.
And then we would have to come back and request an extension.
That's correct.
They would have to request an extension before that though, because it would go...
Sure.
Yeah, you don't want it to expire.
It already expired, so you'd have to request it before.
I would come in in June.
Yes.
So we still need to make a motion, right? On this one?
We can withdraw it. You want to just withdraw your request?
Well, yeah, because I mean, so, yeah.
I'm not in favor of putting it to January 27th.
Yeah, no, understood, understood. I mean, if, if we can withdraw it, and if we have to come back in May or June, then we'll come back in May or June and request it.
Thank you, Mr. Loveman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's withdrawn, so no action on that, correct?
That's right.
So, do we all go? About a motion to adjourn, if I can. Set, ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?